We call this Wednesday, February 19th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Rise for the invocation and then the pledge, please Commissioner Scott Hanson.
I first just had to kind of reflect to be able to present our government needs and plans and things like that for the public, probably ask that you will bless it, that you will bless us with the knowledge to repent of our sins and see the father of the actions and make decisions. You all listen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Bosworth, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Art.
Here.
Commissioner Peak.
Here.
Commissioner Haskell.
Here.
Commissioner Pearl Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Commissioner Mudry.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Drosia.
Here.
Commissioner Jacob, or Toomey, sorry. Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Christensen.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Commissioner Barber.
Here.
Chairman Mott.
Here. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Motion to accept the agenda? Or move by Commissioner Hanson, supported by Commissioner Haskell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next, you have the minutes in front of you, what's your wishes?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Drosia, supported by Commissioner Pearl Wright. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose, motion carries. Next up, we have Communications from the Eaton County Planning Commission. Is there anyone here to present the report?
It is just the annual report.
Okay. That brings us to the limited public comment. If there's anything you'd like to address the board with, please approach the podium and please keep it three minutes or under, please.
Andy Shaver, 2802 North Stein, Chester Township. I wanted to come and just greet everyone and formally announce my candidacy for District One Commissioner. I filed earlier this afternoon to do as such, and so looking forward to a very fruitful campaign with that. Also met with a lot of people already across District One, and I know that there are going to be decisions made over the next number of months until that election is settled. And just would remind all of the commission that District One comprises four out of the 11 civil townships in Eaton County. And I know that there's going to be decisions that must be made about financial things, et cetera, before May, after May. We all hope that public safety will be funded. We all want Sheriff's Department and a court system, et cetera, that's going to be able to serve our community fruitfully. However, I would just call to your remembrance that four out of those 11 townships are not represented currently on this board, so you can expect to see my smiling face at your meetings, bringing some of their thoughts and concerns to you for your consideration. But again, I appreciate this time to come and address you and look forward to an opportunity to working with you in the future.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm in Windsor Township, but I was very disappointed with the vote that did not put someone in office from that district, District One. They need representation. They needed representation. They had representation, and now they don't. So that's just me. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, and I'll, just so everyone knows, the person sitting in District One's chair is our Communications Director, so it is not the representative. All right, next up, we have our committee reports and resolutions, and I'll just remind Commissioners, please turn on your mic when speaking, because I know it's, sometimes we forget, so. So first up, we have Public Works and Planning Committee with Commissioner Keith Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met on February 5th, and I have two action items for tonight. First one is to adopt the Parks Strategic Plan. That's for Fitzgerald, Lincoln Brick, and Crandall and Fox Parks. I move that we adopt that.
Move by Commissioner Barber, supported by Commissioner Drosia. Is there any comments or questions? Commissioner Haskell.
I think it's just prudent to acknowledge that, you know, a lot of these plans and things we go through, forward through with the Parks Plan is funded by a millage and not coming out of the general fund, right?
Correct, correct. Yeah, this is a part of the process of determining what is best to do for the parks and to get those dollars moving and so the public can enjoy the parks and the dollars coming in. Commissioner Drosia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, along with that comment that Commissioner Haskell made, just a reminder that this is just an idea source. This is not set in stone. These are suggestions by a group that we asked to give us ideas. There's some things on there that will absolutely be implemented and other things that we may never see, just because things change. So just let everybody know, this is not a final anything. It's just an idea. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment or question regarding this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, tonight, my second action item is a resolution to appoint the Medical Examiner and the County Medical Examiner Service Agreement. I move it.
Move by Commissioner Barber, supported by Commissioner Drosia. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next up, we have Public Safety Committee with Commissioner Holmes.
Okay, we had a public safety meeting Thursday, February 6th. We have several action items from that meeting. On the agenda, it's number one, the resolution to approve BJA fiscal year 25 for virtual reality de-escalation site-based initiative grant application. And just more information, this partnership is with University of Olivet, does not require matching funds. I move that we approve this resolution.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Holmes, supported by Commissioner Peak. Sorry, I haven't said your name a whole lot. Any questions or comments?
The sheriff, is he here to comment on that, or somebody? Guess not.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment that since the county is facing our budget shortfalls and the potential elimination of Sheriff Deputy Road Patrol, I think it is ill-advised to spend money and go after training that we might not have the road deputies to partake in.
Commissioner Haskell.
I sympathize with Commissioner Barber, but keep, just want to keep in mind that on 4th, whereas down, there's no matching funds for this grant. This is a service that not only can we utilize here locally, but we can actually bring in people regionally from. I can't remember which Commissioner, Commissioner Drosia maybe mentioned that this could be played with as a revenue idea with bringing in the trainings, and if I misplaced your name on that, apologize, Commissioner, but this is something that with this type of training, instead of bringing someone in and paying someone to do the training, we can do it ourselves. Instead of taking many officers off the road at the same time, we can do it piecemeal. It, I understand it's going to be hard to communicate that out to the public, considering our financial situation, but in the end, it actually makes good financial sense to move forward with this.
Controller Sobe.
I would add one thing at the very last, be it further resolved. There's a notation, in most cases, we will indicate that the controller has the authority to do the budget amendment once the funds are received. In this case, we did hold that for the final approval to come here and a budget to accept the award, so you will have the final say if we are granted that award. That way, we weren't, you know, tempting fate if we didn't have a road patrol, so.
Commissioner Toomey.
All right, there we go. I guess I just wanted to mention too, I think Commissioner Sobe is getting at this, but this is just a grant applica, or Controller Sobe, I don't know if that's an upgrade or downgrade, probably a downgrade.
Downgrade.
This is just a grant application, so, you know, we still have to go through the process of accepting that grant if we do get awarded it. So there is another chance for this to come back around when we might know a little bit more about our position, so thank you.
Commissioner Barber.
I would just like to say that, though it is only a grant, however, we do pay man-hours for filling out the grant form, so we are spending money regardless if we get the grant or we don't get the grant. We're spending money in the personnel hours that it takes to apply for the grant and everything else. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah. I just think it was a good investment in our officers, and I think it made sense, so, I don't know, that's why I support this.
Commissioner Art.
It was emphasized at the last, at the Public Safety Committee meeting, how it wasn't a spike in our expense, and as Commissioner Drosia inquired, it, if the grant, if we get the grant, the revenue should make up for the man-hour expenditure.
Okay. Anyone else?
As I remember from the presentation at the committee, this was, they need to get the grant wrote in whatever, and following the May election, then it'll be back to us to accept it or not, but the way they explained it, I think is a really benefit to the training that they can share with cities and other agencies here.
The intent of it is, it won't, we don't get an admin fee to pay for any of the training or the work on the grant. This will be equipment only, and they'll learn to use it, and then the University of Olivet will partner with them because they're going to have performance measures they have to meet, so they'll work on putting that together. They have to be published, so it's a process over a three-year period, just so you understand that.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nope.
Motion carries.
The next one is the items two through nine from the Emergency Management. I move that we approve these resolutions as a slate, and we did this in committee, and Director Wilkinson here will be available, yeah, if we have questions after, so I move this.
Move by Commissioner Holmes, supported by Commissioner Drosia. Any questions or comments regarding these resolutions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
The last resolution would be to approve an application for Title IV-E, the Child Imperent Legal Representation Grant. Goes to the Juvenile Division, what's apply for this grant? It would be offset county's expenses for parent and child legal representation in child abuse cases. We have been getting these since 2021. I move this resolution.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Holmes, supported by Commissioner Peak. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
That will conclude my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Next up, we have Ways and Means with Commissioner Drosia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we had our Ways and Means meeting last Friday, while it was still nice out, but I was gone, so I did, I missed all the chaos. But anyway, our first item is a resolution to approve PA 116 Farmland Open Space Development Rights for Shane and Nicole Hickey, yep, and simply set aside and text abatement, and I would move this, this resolution.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Drosia, supported by Commissioner Pearl Wright. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Hey, next up, we have a resolution, resolution to approve appraisal services contract, and I would move this, also, this is for the Equalization Department.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Drosia, supported by Commissioner Pearl Wright. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose, motion carries.
Onto item three, a resolution pledging full faith and credit to the Potter Drainage District Bonds. And I would move this resolution.
Move by Commissioner Drosia, supported by Commissioner Mudry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we don't discuss you.
That's what everybody voted for, but we do have Roger Swatz from Dickinson Wright here, if you do have questions related to what it means to pledge your full faith and credit. There were questions at Ways and Means, so Roger, if you want to get up and speak, and then Marcus Service, who is the deputy drain commissioner, is here as well to answer questions if you.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you just give us a brief explanation of it? My apologies, we were on a roll, so I, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I'm very happy for you to be on a roll. My name is with Roger Swatz, I'm an attorney with the Dickinson Wright Law Firm, and we have acted as bond counsel to the, to the county's drainage district bonds for many years. The resolution that you just considered is a, really an essential part of being able to provide drainage district services to the residents of the counties in Michigan. Drains are very unique entities in Michigan, because each drain is its own legal entity and really doesn't have anything other than its drain, and so to be able to go out and sell either bonds or notes to finance drain projects, they really need this full faith and credit from the county. And I think, you know, the bottom line is this is a really big benefit to the residents of the county, because it would make these projects all that much more expensive or impossible to do without full faith and credit, so, so we do thank you for your vote. And I guess one of the things I wanted to just, you know, provide to you is some information, which I think you maybe received today as a supplement to your packet, just talking a little bit about how the law, you know, has a lot of backstops and securities in place in order to kind of protect the county. This is a real commitment the county makes, and it's very much appreciated, but because of the way the drains operate and the fact that the costs of the drains are assessed to both the, in part to the county itself and to the, to the cities and townships that are part of the drainage district, as well as benefited property owners, it's very rare in Michigan, I don't actually, I'm not actually personally aware of an instance where a county's actually, actually had to step up and make payment on a pledge like this, but it's very rare because that security is so strong, and it would really, you know, only come up in a place where there's a property assessed that didn't have much value, such that that created a deficiency in the collection of assessments, assessments against the communities are general obligations of those communities. And even in the instances where there might be a delinquency because, because of a tax foreclosure without sufficient funds, the Drain Code also gives the power to levy deficiency assessments, so if there is a deficiency, it's most likely to be relatively small and of relatively short duration, you know, a year or maybe two before that deficiency assessment could be made and the county paid back with, with interest for that kind of thing. There are also, when these things are assessed, there is an administrative fee that's typically put on as well of 1% to also provide some extra funds to provide cash flow protection to the drainage district and then ultimately the county. So we did want to share those things with you. I won't belabor those points, but would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Drosia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir, for being here. Could you just briefly expound on what are the liabilities to a county that offers full faith and credit?
Well, the liability to the county is basically, you know, kind of a common everyday way to think about the full faith and credit, is kind of like being a guarantor of the loan. So the drainage district itself is the borrower, and, and the drainage district will collect those assessments against the property owners and then public corporations, the property owner assessments go out on the, on the December tax bill. And it would be in an instance where there, there was, was a failure to pay an annual installment from a property owner or municipality, that the county would then step in and, and provide payment for that deficiency. So, you know, if I had a, say, a $500 payment on my property for the year, and I didn't pay that on time, and that eventually worked its way through to where my property was, was, was sold at tax foreclosure and wasn't worth enough to actually cover that $500 that I owe, the county would step in and make that payment, and then the drainage district would presumably issue a deficiency assessment to come up with that money and then repay the, the county with interest. So that would be the typical way that, that this would arise, and that's kind of balanced against the fact that if the county couldn't do projects where there is, you know, a need for stormwater protection, just the, you know, the, the countervailing problems that would arise if there's, if there's a failure of this public infrastructure. So, you know, I think in most cases, the, the risk to the county is relatively small compared to potential risks for not actually providing the public service, but obviously it is a real commitment from the county, and I don't want to tell you that it's not.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? All right, our vote was kind of interrupted, so we're going to do that again, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Oppose.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Roger, I appreciate it, and one of the reasons that we felt it was more important when Roger reached out yesterday is because we do have, like we talked about it, Ways and Means, the Bank Inter County project, which is the largest project this county has seen. So when we're going to pledge full faith and credit on something that is that large, you're going to have questions, so him coming now, and he will come back if we need him to, to discuss that is a good thing, so I appreciate that very much.
All right, moving on to item four, resolution to approve fiscal year 2425 budget amendments, and I would move those amendments.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Drosia, supported by Commissioner Pearl Wright. Commissioner Toomey.
Dang, this button is not liking me today. Can you, I know they're small increases, but can you just explain why?
So with the passage of the Parks Millage, the best way for us to leverage projects and funding is to go out for grants. The Michigan DNR Trust Fund Grants are the largest grants that we can request, so it can be for large projects, it could be acquisition of property. We wanted to find, now that we have a design plan, we wanted to actually find the best use and the more likely grant to apply for, that we would be successful, because there are point structures. So hiring a professional service to provide that service is the best way for us to ensure that we would be able to leverage additional funds on these projects that we're doing. So if we can do that, we should, there's a 25% match on those, but obviously you're saving the money in the Parks Millage by doing this.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Item number five, resolution to approve fiscal year 2526 budget schedule. This is additional meetings proposed in case we need to meet, and so you'll want to put these in your calendar, and we may not necessarily meet on these additional dates, but there they are. So if you're late or missing a meeting, you got the information right in front of you right now, and I would move this schedule.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Drosia, supported by Commissioner Pearl Wright. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. And item six, claims and purchases, and I would move these.
Move by Commissioner Drosia, supported by Commissioner Haskell. All questions or comments? All those approve?
Aye.
Support.
Support.
Yes.
It didn't sound right coming out either. All those opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, we also have item number seven, sick leave policy amendment, and I am going to turn that over to Ben.
Hey, everybody. So we did get to talk about this a bit at Ways and Means, and as we forecasted there, there have been changes made to this, so for all those that weren't able to participate in that particular discussion, the earned sick leave. sick leave act is going into effect as of Friday and we're having to, like many employers in the state of Michigan, move rather quickly to make sure that our policies are in compliance with the new standards that are going into effect. We've had some very productive discussions with our labor council and have been able to take our existing policy and find what we think is the best path forward for Eaton County. So in the packet is a resolution. It includes three article changes. The bulk of it is under the paid sick leave act. The other two changes is for our short-term disability. We had mentioned it Ways and Means, but we're switching that to the same structure as all of our bargaining groups. So it will be, anybody that goes out on short-term disability must use their time to bridge the gap between the 66% of short-term disability pay while they're on that leave. That's their annual leave, their paid sick leave and any comp time they may have accrued. And then the next is the leave without pay. This is a provision for anybody who's exhausted their time and doesn't have coverage for time. Supervisors and electeds historically have had the ability to give up to 10 days of leave without pay at the discretion of the manager. We're looking to move that to five just because there's already a lot of generosity built into our leave plan and with the expansion of the rights of employees with the sick leave law, we really need to tighten it up because we're understaffed and we do need people here. And we do have a plan that protects folks when they have honest needs and emergencies, but at the same time, we value our employees and that's why we want them here as much as we can get them, right? So the policy before you, the main change from what was reviewed on Friday is just in the structure of how the sick leave is set up. So there's two tiers of accruals. There's a minimum and then there's an accrual which is our full-time regular. That minimum is the addition brought by the law change and it's just one hour of accruals for every 30 hours worked. There are provisions in there about if somebody's rehired within six months. There's provisions in there that add clarity to what is a year under the policy. And for the most part, the big change that we made since Friday was just in the treatment of time. So for the first 72 hours of sick leave used, it would fall under the provisions that are outlined in the statute. Anything over 73 or more in a 12-month period would fall under our normal policy that's been in place for years and works well for being able to manage staff and make sure everybody's getting their needs taken care of. So with that, I can answer any questions you all may have. I know this is a lot and Lee Hill was giving guidance just a couple hours ago to employers trying to figure out what it was going to look like for them.
Before we get into discussion, do I have a motion to move this?
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Drosia, supported by Commissioner Barber. Any questions or comments for Ben? Commissioner Pearl Wright?
So do you think that this is the way that it's going to continue to move on now? Because at Ways and Means on Friday, we still weren't sure. I watched the MAC 83 podcast and they weren't, as of yesterday, they weren't real definitive at times.
Yeah.
So, okay, this is what we take.
Based on dialogue that we've had with some people at the Capitol and being so close to Lansing, I think we probably hear more than maybe some other communities do, I would say, I would expect that this will go into effect. So there was a bill that was passed, it's a Senate bill. In order for this not to go into effect as of Friday, I think the Senate bill would have to be adopted without any amendment by the House, which is very unlikely. And if there was an amendment, then I think there's a five-day waiting period before they can even take the bill up. So at best, you'd be looking at next week. So the good news is if we adopt this, we'll be positioned. I included in here a trigger clause that if by judicial, legislative, or executive action, there's a delay in these provisions, that we would revert back to our original policy, just so that we don't have to bring it back, take it back, bring it back, take it back every time it gets moved. But does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Commissioner Haskell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question. We've got Section 3B requesting leave and Section 6A also titled requesting leave. One talks about notifying their immediate supervisor within the first hour of the employee's workday. And the other one says if it's foreseeable, the employee should provide seven days written notice. Are these two separate types of leave? Is that what we're seeing here?
Exactly. So the second is an example of that 72 hours. So within the first 72 hours, it would fall under the state statute. And I think the good way to kind of talk to it for folks that have had managing rules, it's like FMLA light a little bit where it's the same bank of time, it just falls under statutory protection of the state. But then after 73 and beyond, you're now just in our normal personnel rules, which are a little bit different.
Okay. Understood. And then I guess my, this is just an observation, and I think this goes to like the greater discussion of all the policies, right? There's a lot of red in this. So does that mean that our previous policy was just very, very thin?
No, I can actually speak. So the, one of the reasons there's so much red, the statute required these whole sections that had never existed be embedded into the policy. So the whole section, which is now labeled 6A through, really, Section 8. There's a savings clause in there, but because this one is so tied to a statute that is going to be subject to court cases and we decided to put a savings clause specifically right here because there'll be a lot of movement that occurs over the next six months to a year. The other pieces, you know, previously the only non-full-time that had any accruals, I think, were seasonals. And that was like a very new thing that was just added. So generally, we were very close to what the state statute was in terms of who's covered in terms of family, what the uses of it can be allowed. There's a small expansion for domestic violence victims and sexual assault victims, but at the same time, I can tell you, we know when people go through stuff, we're not monsters, right?
In practice, we would.
In practice, yeah. When I read the law, I sometimes think of industries that don't have a historic practice of having sick leave or, you know, there's a provision in there where you can't require an employee to find coverage for their time off. And so I think of the restaurant, you know, where you're like, hey, I can't come in and bust today. And they're like, well, you know, need to call around and find a replacement. That's not really Eaton County, but we're still subject to it because it is a one-size-fits-all. Yeah, yeah.
Understood. All right, thanks, Ben.
Yep.
Commissioner Toomey.
So I know you mentioned that this was close to what was there before and I'm not, I can see the strikes and everything in here and the additions. Can you just explain, like, really, top-line, just say like, give me the top-line numbers that have changed, right? How does this, how has the benefit expanded? And like just A.B. it from the old version? Can you just like, what's the main?
Main takeaway would be every employee who's an employee will be covered under either the minimum sick leave or the regular part-time, which we've always had. So this will be an expansion for, say, our on-call, our seasonal staff. There's a cap that allows it to continue to accrue, so there's not like a set limit. They can use up to 72 hours in a year for those that are not full-time. The ability to use the time and, you know, not fall under our standard policy, the first 72 hours would be an expansion. Let's see. I would say that's it, yeah.
Okay, and then one more thing. So we passed this resolution tonight and I see your trigger clause in the, or the savings clause in the back. Let's say a legislative change is made, it doesn't delay the current implementation of ESTA, this resolution, we'd have to have, if we ever wanted to make changes to this, this would have to come back to the board, right?
Yeah, yeah. So the only way the trigger clause would work is if the governor and everybody finds a way to delay until July 1st, which is what the governor had requested the legislature to do. I don't think they have a path to do that, but somehow they found a way. This would just put back into tact what we already had prior to adopting this. If, for instance, the legislature comes together in a month and a half and makes modifications, then we would do the same exercise we just did, except we would now align it to whatever those changes are. And assuming they're passed the legislature and get granted immediate effect, right?
Understood, thank you, that was my question.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Drosia.
I just want to make a comment. I so appreciate our Controller's Office. This is one of those things that we had not planned on having to do, but the state of Michigan said, we want you to do this and this is your timeframe. So they had to work this in along with many other things and we're already short-staffed. And I just really appreciate the efforts and our staff and the Controller's Office, all of our employees throughout our county. But it's stuff like this, when you wonder, what are they doing? Why didn't they answer the phone? This is the kind of stuff that goes on. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? Motion carries.
And lastly, item eight. We have started taking a look at what we do here at the county. Where can we save some money here and there? So, excuse me, we've come up with a new hours of operation schedule and I'm going to move this schedule and then after the motion's made, we're going to, I'm going to ask Connie to expound on this, please.
Been moved by Commissioner Drosia, second by Commissioner Barber. All right, I'm going to go ahead and we, like Commissioner Drosia said, we talked about this at Ways and Means Committee and we had a meeting with some department heads last week with Controller Sobe and we talked about some ideas of going ahead with some hour changes and some different times to be open and closed. And these are some of the things that we talked about and we're going to implement these. We have a resolution in front of us, obviously. But I'm going to read some of the things we talked about, the stuff that I read last Friday, but there's a lot of people that weren't here or didn't hear it. So I want to express my strong opinion and sincere gratitude to the departments for being involved in this and Controller's Office too, they put a lot of work into this because we've got to take some action and we need to do it sooner than later. So I've instructed the Controller's Office to close the office on Thursday, February 20th, and Tuesday, February 25th, to work on the upcoming budget and related work projects. And this is a priority. They have been swamped and they need time to get some work done. On these days, the Controller's Office is not available to the public and is limited in accessibility to departments and elected officials. We have always had an open-door policy for residents, elected officials, and department heads. That much change during this budget cycle. The Controller's Office is dealing with unprecedented amounts of work. We are directing the Controller's Office to prioritize their time by having individuals schedule their meetings in advance. Last-minute meetings with no notice must stop. That goes for us too. These call and, please call and schedule time to ensure your request gets the kind of attention you're expecting. This goes for residents and departments too. These changes do not require committee or board action. Because of these unprecedented times, I am recommending the board change the hours of operation for the entire administrative wing of the courthouse. The admin side of the building will only be open to the public from 8:30 to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Thursday. And offices will all be closed to the public from 8 to 5 on Fridays. Staff will still be working 40 hours a week, but they will not always, they will not always be open to the public. This will help our short-staffed offices serve the public more efficiently and effectively. Offices will be closed uniformly from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. for lunch. Due to staffing shortages, offices have difficulty covering lunch breaks. Closed to the public on Fridays. Employees can catch up on Monday through Thursday work that staffing shortages created. Most of our offices are beyond short-staffed. This change will reduce stress, structure, and the overwhelming workload to more management levels and hopefully help the county retain employees because they are leaving. We have a lot of tough work ahead of us. Let's do it right by our employees. This will be on the agenda. I don't need to read that. I'm doing it. So, yeah, those are some big changes and we need to do it now because we've been talking about it and talking about it, but it's here. We need to make these changes because our staff is overloaded with work. They need a day to catch up because they're serving the public and the public comes in and it takes time. But we can no longer do that because we just don't have the staff to do it. Connie's staff, the Controller's Office, they've been short-staffed for a long time and I've been saying that they need at least a couple people in there to be able to handle the workload. But as you know, that's not going to happen, unfortunately, and other departments need staff too. So with that, we have this resolution in front of us and I want us to be diligent about respecting their time. It's valuable, in more so now than ever. Thank you to all the departments and department heads for working with us. I know it's a difficult time and it's probably get more difficult, unfortunately, but this needs to be done. Is there anything that you want to add? Okay. All right, with that, I'm going to move this resolution. So it hasn't been? Okay, that was a long time ago. All right, is there any comments or, Commissioner Pearl Wright?
Friday, I put 20 and 21 as being closed, is that still correct?
Twenty, I believe, 20 and 25.
So the resolution that we're talking about is the hours of operation from 8:30 to 4:30. That has nothing to do with what Chairman Mott talked about within my office. We're talking about closing our office and having discussions with Chairman Mott and Commissioner Drosia and Commissioner Barber about the amount of work going into this budget. And if you saw what we deal with every day and the number of calls that come in and the things that we're interrupted because everybody has a lot of work that they're doing in departments, the public has a lot of questions, we need dedicated time to focus. So two separate things. That's not impacting the county, just our office.
Oh, so those...
Those two days.
Coming up two particular days right now, so...
Yes, that's just our office. So what you're looking at moving, the action, is just on the hours of operation for the administrative wing.
Right, that I got.
Okay.
And it'll be ongoing Fridays, ongoing Fridays.
Yes.
Okay, but the other is just for you, the 2021.
Correct. And I do want to note that we're talking about Fridays and we have Ways and Means on Friday. So obviously, that will continue, right? That's, it's a public meeting, but it'll be open. That's obviously going to be noted. We've added some Friday meetings to work on the budget, will be open, but the other offices would not be. So just so you understand that part of it as well.
And just to clarify, it's the 20th and 25th, not 21st.
For admin, right?
Yes.
For county's office, yes.
I'll make a note, thank you.
Is there any other comments? Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, I would say agreeing there. Concisely, I put it, what got us here will not get us where we want to go, so we need a change.
Commissioner Toomey.
Thank you. So the administrative offices, you know, I see in here it says employees will continue to work 40 hours per week. So when those administrative offices are closed, how many people, like, can you describe to me everybody within that unit, the administrative offices?
So we refer to ourselves as the administrative wing, but it has the county clerk, my office, the treasurer's office, equalization, register of deeds, drain office, construction code, veterans, housing, community development. So it's all the offices on this wing. We obviously have difficulty within our office, within technology services, and in maintenance facilities because we're providing services in-house. So we have workers that will deal with issues that arise, obviously, as an example. Work comp claim, you have to act on that right away. So there are things that we would act on, but we're giving the other offices the ability... So there are things that we would act on, but we're giving the other offices the ability to cover. They still have vacations. They have employees that are sick. County clerk could tell you a story. When we're lucky, we have a clerk who works on a day-to-day basis. She covers the office. There was like a day that she covered the office. That's the difficulty we're running into. We haven't filled positions. Equalization is down someone. Construction code is down someone. This will give them the ability to allow their employees to take a vacation, allow them to not stress out and try to cover when they have employees calling sick. We have a new sick leave change policy. So it's struggling with that and it's struggling with the unknown into the future as well. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, it answers the question. I mean, I know we're just in a damned-if-we-do, damned-if-we-don't situation here. But, you know, it is worrying, especially, you know, folks already have a hard enough time getting out here to access services. And, you know, it's hard enough to get out here and I worry for folks that, I don't know exactly the, if we measure if Friday's the busiest day of the week or anything like that, right? I wouldn't know. I'm not here on every Friday. But I just do worry about that, the access to stuff, so.
Commissioner Arn?
My only question is, presuming that we truncate and adjust the hours of operations for this section, this is going to immediately go onto the website, et cetera, for informing people when not to come?
So, yes, we would have signs. That would be the other date that we want to do it. But we would have signs out front. We would have it posted on our website. The technology director, Daly, and I met today to talk about how we simplify the phone tree. It doesn't mean that phones can't ring into an office, right? And the messages come in, they don't have to answer. Message comes in, they can respond if they need to. County clerk could schedule a meeting time if somebody needed to come in. The idea is just overall to close the offices on a regular basis. But obviously, we know there are things that are going to come up. But yes, everybody will be notified. Logan will send everything out that he's nodding, that we need to, to ensure that the public is notified. And on any paperwork, I'll use the county clerk because she's sitting right there. Any paperwork that she hands out that has a date that they would need to pick it up, they won't notify them. But the county clerk, again, has the flexibility to do something outside of that if she schedules an appointment. Does that help? This is not, I'm just going to say, this is not something that we want to do. It is not. And we're going to see how it goes. It might turn out to be a nightmare. It is a nightmare. Whether it works or not, it's a nightmare. It's not anything you want, your county government. We are service, but the biggest cost in service and the only thing that is service are our people, our employees. That's it. You're not talking about pieces of equipment that provide services. It's all the people out there. It's all the people working in those offices. So they're stressed. Whether people want to believe that or not, I see it, day in and day out. And for several years, we've seen it. So this is the action that we've talked about. This is the action that Chairman Mott was comfortable with. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Controller partially answered my question. Okay. I don't want the general public to think that this Friday shutdown is for counter-service only. Well, I'll bypass that. I'll just call, you know. Now, are the phones going to say the offices are closed, yada, yada? Okay, good. I think that's prudent.
Yeah, so when we talked about that, there were lengthy conversations. The easiest way to manage that, we can put an introductory message on the phone. Obviously, this isn't impacting the courts. They have to be open. So we can say that certain offices, hours of operation will be this to this. You can contact offices to see what their hours are. And then internally in our office, our messages will say that. We can also put it in our email content so that people are aware of seeing that. We did that through COVID when we changed hours. So, I mean, we'll be able to get that message out, but yes, that's.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments?
I'll just add that we talked about it at Ways and Means. This is a different climate. We don't know, we've never been here before, never been in this situation. So for this board, everything that comes before us has to be really scrutinized. And, you know, Commissioner Barber, you're not, you're not wrong entirely in your thinking. Because before, we'd have requests come before us and, you know, it wasn't, you know, maybe out of the realms of possibility to be able to support it and finance it and all that. We're not going to be able to do that now. Like I said earlier, that we have no more money coming in. We've got a budget that's balanced to the end of, or October for this, for this budget cycle. And after that, I mean, we have no more money. So we have to be very conscious of how we're running the county. So with that, we're going to vote on this resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Drosia. Next on the agenda is elected officials' comment. Are there any?
Left me off, I mean.
Did I let?
I know you don't like listening to me talk.
Okay. My apologies. Controller Sobie?
Well, I, I'll keep it brief, but I want to make a few points that I think the public should hear. But first of all, we heard about the drain, Potter Drainage District. During, whenever we have a drain, we have an S&amp;P Standard and Poor's rating call and a due diligence call to see where we are at financially. And they'll do a rating. We have a double-A rating right now. So Treasurer Ray Natt's office, my office, met today with S&amp;P. We had a discussion about our finances. It's a real discussion. We were grilled, as we should be, with where we're going. The last rating call we had was in 2024, before the tax limitation proposal was up. We maintained our rating. Today, they are not sure if the rating would go down. But they are going to analyze our budget very closely because they have to. We explained how the public safety millage would work versus how we had the tax limitation proposal. I think they have a good understanding of what we would be looking at. Our finance director has provided a lot of information and the treasurer's office has provided more. I think we talked a little bit about sending them some more pieces of information just so they have it. It's an important call, important process. I'm going to tell you that I hope we maintain that rating, but don't be surprised if we do not. It's not going to drop way down. But we've had that rating for a long time and we've gotten through that. And I will say, we've balanced our budget. We haven't had to use fund balance. Most of you know the reason is because of the ARP funds that we received. So we were able to talk about that year after year after year in these rating calls. We can't do that anymore. So tough times, tough discussions, that was a big one today. I think it was an introduction. Ben Dawson had not been in one before and Treasurer Ray Natt, it was his first. It's a big call. I want to just talk a little bit about the public safety millage because I think there's some confusing information that's going to go around. I'm not going to get into what people are saying related to social media. Those of you who know me know that I don't follow it. People call me and say, "Oh, my God, this was out on the web." I'll correct information, but we're not going to respond to social media. What we do on a daily basis, and our communications director can tell you, we answer emails and questions and phone calls. We welcome those very much. There's a lot of time that we take in answering those questions. So I will say to the public, people that are watching, please call us, please email us. Let us explain things. Don't assume what you're reading is factual. Or someone may misinterpret what they read, right? That happens. It's a lot of information that's out there. It's a lot of people talking. People are angry and they have a right to be angry. Excuse me. The county hasn't talked to, choking, I should take a drink. It's my Diet Coke time. We're going to get money for that statement, too. We have not talked to you as a public. We haven't. We haven't been present. We haven't gone to meetings. I've said this over the last year. I've said it a lot. I know that when we went to meetings, to local communities, when we held town halls, they didn't know. They didn't know who we were. They didn't know the services we provided. So we haven't done a good job. We've changed administration. Chairman Mott is really strong in communicating. He wants us out there. We're talking to legislators. We are getting out there. We've had a meeting with the members of the governor's office. We're doing what we can do to bring in money. I want the public to know that. I want you to know, we know you're upset. I get it. Just ask us questions. Every day I get a question or Logan will get a question, communications, Ben will get a question. And a lot of them are coming from our employees because they're reading social media. And they're like, "Is this true?" So we let them know. Here's the history. Here's the truth to it. Yes, this is correct. This is why that happened. I love that our employees are asking. We weren't communicating with them either. So in the last two years, again, we have a different philosophy. We are communicating. We are just too late. So we'll continue to work on that. There were discussions we had about having another town hall. We met, I think Ben and Logan met with the local treasurers. They had questions. They're angry, again, they should be, right? I'm not going to complain about that. It's our history. We haven't talked. I mentioned ARPA. We balanced our budget. If I, and I'm not trying to say anything negative, I've said it at meetings because I've had Chairman Mott there to protect me. We should have done things differently. We got $10 million of federal funding that we were able to use toward general operations. Was that responsible to tell the public? We're okay. No, I don't think it was. I think we would have made different decisions and asked for revenue or made the cuts. So we're looking at cuts regardless. We have a public safety millage. It's not a general operating millage. The way that works, because people are saying the general fund is going to just take that money. That's not how it works. When you have a dedicated millage, like we're talking about, the money will go into a fund. It'll have a number. Melissa will give us that number at some point that is dedicated to public safety. What will happen to the general fund, because there's no purpose in getting $10 million a year if we're just going to increase spending in public safety, right? Or in the prosecutor's office or for animal control. What we're saying is we're not going to have road patrol. We're saying we're going to cut animal control. We're saying we're going to cut in the prosecutor's office. So we will not take the general fund monies that we were planning on eliminating if the millage doesn't pass. And we will not, we will put the millage toward those operations. You're going to have to make those tough decisions here this year. So if that millage passes, you're going to have to look at what you want to fund. And I'll give you an example about road patrol because I've been here too long. When I started here, I have, had to worry about being pulled over for speeding. You, I haven't had to do that in years because you don't have somebody who's driving, I'll tell you, it did happen, on five-point highway. You had officers that were driving around. They were going all over. Eaton County deputies that were going around and policing neighborhoods. It has not happened since before 2008. So when you say that you have not had service from the sheriff's office, you're right. You haven't. Because we haven't staffed that, right? We haven't. The other thing I'm going to mention is the hot topic of providing contracts. And the largest one that we have is Delta. First of all, I think the county has to quit talking about Delta as being its own entity. Every township, every city is its own entity. Delta Township chose to contract with the sheriff's office. This goes back to 1983. You can't argue that that's a bad way to do business, right? Because you're taking a police force that exists and you're offering that out to another entity, right? So you can't argue that that's bad government because you're reducing the size of government. You have one body, Eaton County and the sheriff, that's administering this contract. So it's not bad business. Is there a question related to the calculation that we do? Sure. You're going to have to look at that. If the contract is to continue, it expires 9/30/25. You're going to have to look at what that covers. There's what's considered a calculation of our state equalized value that basically accepts the fact that, and I want to be clear with this, the sheriff represents Eaton County. That includes Delta Township. So if the sheriff has road patrol and Delta was able to have their own police force, which would be really expensive for them to do, he would still have a presence there, right? So that's where that SEV calculation comes in. So people talk about, "We're funding Delta." It's a, it's a recognition of the fact that the Delta Township taxpayers should have those services to begin with. So it's only 1.4 million that we're talking about. And it's, it's a calculation. We also receive 15% in what we call admin fees. So we can look at that contract all you want. The bottom line is, that's not bad business. I just want to make, as an administrator, that's not bad business, right? But if we don't have this millage pass, you're going to have to look at ending contracts. Because otherwise, we're just creating personnel to give them out to other agencies, not considering the whole county. And we still have administrative expenses because we employ those people that work at Delta. So that's a very difficult topic. I know all of you have asked questions. Our employees have asked questions. The public has asked questions. That's a long explanation. I am so sorry I didn't let you skip my report. But I felt that that was something that was important because, and I've said it at many meetings, we are all Eaton County. We're not separate. The cities are all in Eaton County. The township, it's our biggest tax base. They're not the enemy. So with that, I will leave it. But please, to the public, to everybody, ask us questions. I'll answer them. You may not like my answer, but I'll give you an answer. Okay, I'll let you go now.
Thank you, Controller. And now we're up to the elected officials' comment. If there's any elected officials here that would like to address the board, please. Come on up. And just so the public knows, there is no three-minute limit when it comes to elected officials.
I will be under three minutes. First, I just, I'm Kelly Morton. I'm one of the circuit court judges. I wanted to start by just thanking Connie in particular and everyone on the board for working with us because, of course, we have some different obligations through the state court. through the state court administrative office about when we can be open and closed. And so she's been asking lots of questions and working with us. And we want you to know that we're going to do everything we can to lessen our burden on the, any offices that may be involved in working with us, even when we can't be closed on Fridays. We too, as you know, are working with reduced staff. In fact, you may or may not have seen our deputy court administrator working in the clerk's office downstairs in district court. She's been our finance person for the last several weeks, but been doing just about every job there is in civil and criminal district court clerk's offices. So we, you know, understand the burden. We're doing our best, but we really appreciate that you've been so willing to work with us and ask the questions. And want you to know, we are gonna do our best as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Judge.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Doug Lloyd and I am your Eaton County Prosecutor. I'm guessing that the three-minute limit was for me, Chairman, generally. And I appreciate that because I actually took the time last night to jot down some words. I know I've been passionate the last few times and so I thought maybe actually writing something down would be beneficial. And it seems to be a theme as to what we're discussing tonight. Because last night, for me, it was really thinking about my staff as to what they're going through and how proud I am of them. So I wanted to take a moment to recognize the incredible work of our assistant prosecutors, victim advocates, and legal assistants. Day in and day out, they are in the front lines of justice, ensuring that our community remains safe and that the law is upheld with fairness and integrity. Part of our mission in this office is not only to serve the people of Eaton County today, but also to build the future of our profession. We take great pride in mentoring and shaping young attorneys, giving them the roots and experience they need to be strong advocates for justice. While it's always bittersweet to see them move on, I see it as a testament to the strength of our office. When an attorney who's trained has, takes the next step in their career, it reflects the high standards, mentorship, and commitment to excellence that we attempt to show every day. Right now in my office, I have nine assistant prosecutors. A recent study found that for a county of our size and with our caseload, we should have 16 attorneys to properly handle the work. That means we are operating at nearly half the recommended staffing levels of what we should have for a county this size. And as I told Public Safety, I believe, a week ago Thursday, adding to the challenge, right now I'm only actually allotted 11 attorneys in my office. But we're actually down currently two attorneys as well as two legal assistants. With an attorney and a legal assistant who just put their notice in within the last two weeks. Losing skilled professionals isn't just a staffing issue. It directly affects the ability to serve the community. The prosecutor's offices serves all 12 police agencies here in Eaton County. Each police department and every law enforcement officer relies on our office to prosecute cases, seek justice for victims, and hold defenders accountable. Without adequate resources, that job becomes significantly harder. And see, unlike the defender's office, which has the ability to employ contract attorneys, our office doesn't have that option. Every prosecutor, victim advocate, and legal assistant in our office is a full-time county employee. That means that we don't have the flexibility to bring in outside help when our staff is overburdened. That makes staffing shortages even more challenging because every lost position directly reduces our capacity to prosecute cases. Our team is doing everything possible to keep up, but every departure makes it harder to meet the demands of a growing caseload. Now I too know that there has been a lot of discussion about the upcoming public safety ballot proposal. And I truly appreciate the passion and engagement from our community. To me, it's really clear that people care deeply about the future of public safety in Eaton County. And that's something I respect and value. I also understand that people wanna feel confident that their tax dollars are being used wisely. That's not just reasonable for us, that it's actually important. Transparency and accountability are priorities in the prosecutor's office. And we welcome conversations about how we allocate our resources. If anyone on the board, in the gallery, on YouTube, has questions or concerned, I'd be happy to sit down, go over my budget, and have an honest discussion. My door is always open. And I want people to know that when we work together to find the best way forward to our community, that's the best thing that we can do. And for those who are questioning how we spend our resources, especially in my office, let's be clear. We don't have extravagant expenses. What we're asking for isn't luxury. It's the basic funding needed to ensure we can continue protecting this community. So I remain open, as your Eaton County Prosecutor, to discussions with the public and county leadership about how we move forward in a way to keep Eaton County safe. But the reality is, is that funding impacts justice. Staffing impacts justice. And the choices we make as a community today will shape the level of service we can provide tomorrow. So for me tonight, I felt as I thought about what I wanted to say today, that I really wanted to say thank you to my team, the people within my office. Your hard work, your commitment, and your passion do not go unnoticed. This office remains strong because of you and I couldn't be prouder to stand along such dedicated professionals. Together, we will continue to serve this community with the integrity, fairness, and dedication that justice demands. Thank you for your time, Commissioner, Chairman. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I just kinda went over my time.
There is no time. Any questions for Prosecutor Lloyd? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, the audience in attendance, and those at home, watching at home. My name is Darius Rainette, and I am your Eaton County Treasurer. I'm gonna throw that for you, Lloyd. I'd be remiss if I didn't give credit to my staff. I've been in my position now for less than two months. I really enjoy it despite the challenges. But I wanna say, my staff is just like the staff in the Controller's Office, the prosecutor's office, and the sheriff department, and other agencies here. They're very competent and professional in what they do, but they are overworked. And I was thinking, we have a counter. People come in to pay their dog license or the property taxes or something like that. And we have, my staff, they're busy reconciling accounts or working on show cause hearings or things like that. We always, coverage is very important, important. And they regularly leave what they're doing, despite all this, the deadlines and everything, to provide service at the counter. And they do a very good job of that. In addition to answering the phones quite often with a lot of the things, the misdirected calls, things that should really go to the local units of government, people calling about their tax assessment or something like that. In the last month, my staff has helped with show cause hearings where we granted extensions for people who are behind in the property taxes for '22 or '23 that have not yet been, had a judgment for foreclosure against them. But working with Capital Area Community Services, we've developed a payment plan. And as long as they can have a reasonably good, solid plan to make up those taxes, we grant them an extension and put that foreclosure process on hold. We also met with two electronic payment vendors to discuss some shortcomings we had with some payment processing in the treasurer's office and building codes. And after talking to them, we think it'll result in greater efficiency and more importantly, lower charges for the customer. My staff also provided information for the Standard and Poor's bond call that we had later this morning. So yes, I'm very, I'm very happy with my staff, very proud of them. So I'd like to acknowledge that. And yes, this millage is a very difficult topic. But I think it's, once you know, become familiar with county operations, you'll see how dire it really is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer. Any other elected officials? All right, all right, moving on. Next up, we have the Commissioners' comment. Any Commissioners like to speak? Commissioner Barber.
Thank you, Chairman. I just think in the situation we are in, we should take a look at everything that we vote on that could hold us accountable in the next budget cycle. Everything we voted on, you know, that we're approving money, those grants and everything, it's next budget cycle when we're going to have to be tied to that monetary agreement, right? So I haven't made this a secret, but I'll just say it out here. This is, my vote will show where I stand. I feel that we should not spend any money or tie our hands any money for next budget cycle until we find out what next budget cycle looks like. Thank you, Chairman.
Anyone else?
I just wanna add that Controller Solby brought up about us being open and transparent. And I just wanna add to that. So when we interviewed Controller Solby, that was one of the main topics that we brought up. Because in my opinion, previous administration was not that way. That's how they chose to run the county and that's their prerogative. But in my opinion, the residents of this county need to know what the board is doing and the Controller's Office is doing, where the money's going. And we need to be more open about that and allow the public to come in. Controller's Office has been more than willing to open up their doors and open up the books so that people can see. Because, once again, we're government. There's a lot of speculation that we're very wasteful. And like Prosecutor Lloyd said, we're a local government. We don't have a big margin. We don't have a lot to spend on frivolous things. And so it's difficult to get that message across and for people to believe it because they're just making assumptions and that's understandable. But we wanna be as transparent as possible. And a lot of the questions, or some questions came up to me. During the last millage and this one too. Well, how can you guarantee us that things aren't going to change in the future? How are you gonna guarantee us that this passes, that it's gonna continue to be open and transparent? And my response to that is, because of Controller Solby and myself and this board and our dedication to being open and transparent, is that hopefully, in the future, future controllers, future board chairs, future board, we set a precedent that this is how good government runs. You're open, transparent, and allow the public to have access and the employees. And I, and you noticed just tonight, we didn't have this prior to two years ago. Department heads weren't coming up and giving us, you know, reports during committee meetings, during this meeting. And the Controller's Office really wasn't explaining a whole lot what was going on either. So to answer that question again, hopefully, we've set some parameters in place that this continues, long after we're gone. So, but with that, if there's nobody else, have any comments? We're gonna move on. Yeah, Commissioner Aschel.
I'd like to kinda build and echo on what you say. You know, I've, in a previous career, working on campaigns, we had the, I guess, ended up being fortunate experience of having our personal phone numbers published on mail that went out. And there was some wild accusation and claims on there. And that ended up being one of the best things that ever happened to us because every single time that we took time out of our day to have one-on-one conversations and answer questions, to get over the bogus claims, whatever, it was incredibly time-consuming, but it was very valuable. So Connie, to you and your office, and even to Prosecutor Lloyd for saying the same thing, thank you for doing that and offering that as a service. And then again, to the transparency note, you know, one of the first things that I wanted to do when I became a county commissioner was get the recordings back and published. And we did a transparency resolution. And I'm very happy to see that going the right direction. And I think one action that we've done that proves our sincerity in being more transparently is actually having a communications director in Logan, who's been doing a fantastic job as well. So thank you all around.
Very good points. Anybody else? All right, we're gonna move on to unfinished business?
None.
None? Any old business?
No, sir.
No? Any new business?
No, sir.
That brings us to our second limited public comment. And if anyone would like to address the board, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and everyone in the audience tonight. My name is Jeff Christensen. I am a Charlotte City Councilman for District One. Tonight, I'm here as a resident. One thing tonight that I really wanna thank you for is your approval of closing down on Friday so that the county employees can actually have a chance, to have a fighting chance, to catch up. I can't imagine the stress that they're under with the shortness of staff that they have. But I will tell you, every time I've came to the county to a window, I'm always greeted with a smiling face. And I appreciate that. And I hope other residents do as well. Seriously overworked, underpaid, and they deserve much better than they're going through right now. Also, with the decisions that deal in the county having to offer a full faith and credit in order to get a better rate or an affordable rate, this was dealing with the drain. Where's our drain commissioner tonight? I have not seen our drain commissioner, ever, at a meeting, ever. And that's a lot of money to be talking about and a lot of responsibility that this board has to take on. And the person in charge isn't even here to answer about it. That just boggles my mind. And I, I hope that you all are seeing the same thing. You know, I listen to the departments here. I, Connie and Diana and all the departments here that come to committee meetings and come to commissioner meetings. And they exemplify and show that they're doing everything they can to cut and get things done. The judicial branch is here tonight. Our prosecuting attorney is here tonight. And they're all working for the same thing. And that's to keep Eaton County strong under some pretty dire circumstances. And I applaud all of them, I really do. My concern with the backing of the bond for this drain project is the fact that that is an improvement project. What happens if we have something dire? That it is, there's no question, we have to do it now. now, and we need to have another full faith backing of something, of, of a funding. If they extend it on something that's an improvement versus holding out and making sure we have it if we need it as a necessity because of our financial situation, I think that would have made a lot more sense. I understand the cost is higher if you don't, but the fact of our financial position, I thought that was a bad decision. I, I, I think we just have, with the minimal you have to work with, you have to be prepared for anything at a moment's notice. And I think that takes something away, especially if our standard and poor ratings could be possibly teetering because of the county's financial situation. So I thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. Great to hear about transparency. I love it. Ironically enough, that's why I'm up here. Not because of you guys, you guys have been great, but watching the Ways and Means Committee last Friday, regarding the sheriff, there is a grant in regards to a SRO for Olivet University. Commissioner Barber asked the sheriff, you know, have you approached the city? Because obviously, the city of Olivet has their own police department. Have you approached them? What was the answer, what's the question? And what blew my mind is that the sheriff's response was, I quote, "I really don't want to get into that. There's reasons, but I don't want to get into that." To me, that just blows my mind. It, it seems like a straightforward question to answer, but a, a response like that just sounds like there is something that he's trying to hide, especially, you know, when he's asking for money with the millage. I mean, how, how does that appear to people that might be on the, on the edge about that? I know we've obviously heard previously about people having concerns with the millage, but that's not why I'm here. But that kind of answer can obviously raise questions. So, obviously, again, that's not under your direct purview. You can't control the sheriff directly, but I just want to say, good job for you guys to do that. Make sure you are holding people accountable where possible, and I just wanted to bring that up as an example, where possibly you can maybe press a little harder next time. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else like to approach the board?
Andy Shaver, Chester Township, thank you again for three more minutes. Mr. Chairman, and I just want to commend all of the elected officials that came and, and did speak and share tonight. I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful for all of the Commissioners and, and your guys' work together. As I, as I look deeper and deeper into the issues of this county, obvious to anyone, there's huge issues that need to be overcome. As I speak to people across District One over the last couple of weeks, I'm very encouraged because the, the fabric of the county is being tested. But I also believe that there is, there's an awakening that's happening in the county where the entities of government and the people that have elected them are coming closer and closer together. So I think we can, we can also, in, in the light of all of these things that aren't fun to deal with, I would encourage you with the fact that I think we'll all come out stronger and better because of the decisions that you guys are having to make over the next weeks, months, and years. I, I really appreciate the opportunity to sit in on the Ways and Means Committee and, and just listen. Last week, I think there are a lot of opportunities that I would just encourage the public to come in and, and, and hear more. Finally, I would, I'd encourage each one of you to remember District One. And I'll probably be at every meeting talking about District One because I promised the people there that I would. But they are geographically a large portion of the county, a quarter of the county, geographically is in District One. And they have different needs and different thoughts about the circumstances that the county's in and the services that are required than maybe some of the more populated areas. And so I hope that consideration will be given, communication will be engaged in, not just to the citizens and the voters, but also to the townships. Of, as I've spoken with some township leaders in District One, they're concerned about some of the impending changes that could come and how they would be affected by that, and, and they would also like an opportunity to have a voice into that. They don't have a Commissioner. So I hope there will be lines of communication that are, that are built and established there as well. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Bruce Barland again at Diamonddale, Windsor Township. And I look at all these bike paths on these roads, and there's no bikes on them, you know, over and over and over again. You know, and I don't know where the money comes from, but is there a way, if it was a grant, could we sell those bike paths to other counties or something? I know, that's impossible. But, okay, walking paths. We put in these walking paths, you know, a few hundred thousand here, a hundred thousand there, putting in walking paths. Now, the bike paths are even more expensive than that because most of them are made out of asphalt. And, okay. And here's one more thing, and that is the, it seems like a year or two ago, Eaton County got some huge bus-like thing for the Sheriff's Department, $900,000 something for emergency. They had a smaller version of that, but this one was a brand-new one. And I guess it was some kind of grant, not positive, but I think it was some kind of grant. And for this, so it costs general taxpayers' money. It didn't cost just Eaton County taxpayer money. But I'm wondering, in the situation we're having right now, if maybe we could sell that to some other, you know, some other county. I know that's impossible too, but we've got to find some ways to save money that makes sense for the people of Eaton County. And, okay. Thanks again.
Anyone else? All right. Well, we are going to adjourn to March 19th for our next meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.